Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Fisher City Council meeting. We're going to start with some announcements with respect to the COVID pandemic. We're going to continue to conduct these council meetings in accordance with the federal and state and local guidelines. Tonight's council meeting is being livestreamed. Additionally, the council has provided the public with opportunities to participate in this meeting by submitting comments through the city's website. Any comments received have been distributed to the council members this evening, and it will be included in the minutes of tonight's agenda. So there are no proclamations this evening, and there are no presentations. So now I'm going to turn it over to Finance Committee Chairman John Weingard for the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, President Kobel, and good evening, everyone. Reporting from the Finance Committee, there's items on the agenda tonight that we are recommending for approval. On the consent agenda, item 6B and 6C, and on the regular agenda, item 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, we are recommending for approval this evening. Just as a little color to our last Budget Finance Committee, we had our audit firm in to review our audited financial statement. We're one of probably about five to six different cities in the entire state that have audited financial statements by an independent CPA firm, not by the state of Indiana, but a true audit firm. BKD came in and gave a report on our financial position and gave us an unqualified clean opinion for a third year in a row. This is something that's a great achievement as we continue our fiscal responsibility back to the taxpayers. In addition, we've won a couple of awards, distinguished budget presentation, and also the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. On our website, we'll have our CAFR, which is called, it's our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, that reflects the activities financially for the city. It's your money, folks. Take a look at it. It's great. And I want to thank Lisa Bradford and her team. They did an outstanding job during a COVID pandemic, able to have their audit team in for an unqualified clean opinion. It's great news. Any questions?
Thank you, John. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have three items, 6A, 6B, and 6C.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to the economic development portion of our meeting this evening. Resolution 101920B. This is a request to approve an economic development agreement with Incog BioPharma Services. Hearing to present is Megan Baumgartner.
Thank you, Councilmember Kobel. Thank you again for the record. Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development for the City of Fishers. Tonight, we have a very exciting economic development project for lots of different reasons. We're fortunate in Fishers to have some great economic development company, or prospects in the pipeline, but also being able to celebrate this one tonight. Last week, we announced the plans of Incog BioPharma Services, a biopharmaceutical manufacturing company's intent to move to Fishers and open up their new facility here and start operations with their newly formed company. The project's scope is approximately a 60,000-square-foot facility. Total investment is $60 million. Most of that really is coming in the form of the personal property that they plan on putting into the building. As you can imagine with this sort of line of work, lots of clean labs, advanced manufacturing technology that is not coming at a low cost. Also impressive are the employment numbers and plans that they have. The first phase through 2024, they plan 150 employees. The average salary is $83,000, and then the second phase is up to 260 employees through 2026. The incentive package is a 13-year personal property tax abatement. Council hasn't done an enhanced or a super abatement before, so this allows us in state statute to extend a personal property tax abatement out 13 years. We're requesting a 100% abatement of this. We're also requesting a two-year real property tax abatement at 100% each year. Incog, after they build the shell of their building, will probably get a partially assessed, or a partial assessment on their facility while they continue the buildout of the interior of the building. So we're requesting to help with offsetting those first two years in addition to the personal property cost, the offset of their real property tax abatement. We're estimating approximately $90,000 to $100,000 per year in the building and facility itself. We're also requesting a waiver of sewer fees, but road and bridge fees will be paid as part of this, as well as permitting and inspection fees. The real win here, in addition to the project terms and the scope here, is the team that we've been able to meet and are excited to welcome to Fishers. Their executive team is here tonight, and I'd love for them to come up, share a little bit about who they are and why they're excited about Fishers.
Thank you, Megan.
Good evening. My name's Corey Lewis, here to represent Incog BioPharma. With me is Ted Green and Doug Dehoff, also part of the executive team. As Megan mentioned, we've recently formed this company based on past experiences in the industry, identifying the need for expansion of life science capacity. And specifically, we've located Fishers as a community that we can be involved with, not just for the near term, but for the long term of this business. What we're doing, you can see, is a big investment, both in terms of financial commitment, but also in the community. The jobs that we're looking to deploy for this organization are going to be across a number of skill sets and disciplines, both on the business side as well as the science and manufacturing front. So we believe that Fishers has the right environment for us to be able to attract and ultimately retain that employee base that we're going to grow. Also, the location of Fishers has been important, and the amenities for which I believe Fishers has. We are a life science company manufacturing products for other pharmaceutical companies. Those companies will come to Fishers. They will get the opportunity to see the town. They'll get the opportunity to be here for a day, a week, sometimes a month at a time. And I'm confident that the amenities that are located here within Fishers, be it the hotels, the restaurants, the opportunity for team building and entertainment, will serve us well, again, both short term of where you are, but also some of the plans that I've heard of and seen from the team relative to what Fishers is planning to do over the next five and 10 years. So thank you for your time, and again, appreciate the assistance of being able to bring this business to Fishers.
Thank you.
Any questions for Corey?
Are there any questions for Corey from the council?
Maybe just a comment. Certainly, thank you for your, picking Fishers as your place of doing business. Welcome to Fishers. It's a great place to work and live and play, and we look forward to being in Incog and your partnership for success. So
Thank you.
Welcome to our community.
Thank you.
And great job, Megan, and your team, and the mayor. This is an outstanding opportunity for us.
Thank you.
There's another question. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. So is there any more discussion from anybody or comments from the council?
I will add that we will bring the declaratory resolution forward next month to start the economic revitalization area process. So this is approval of the EDA, and then council will review and approve the declaratory and confirmatory resolutions in the next couple of months.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, all those in favor of approving an economic development agreement with Incog BioPharma Services, Resolution R101920B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome to Fishers. We look forward to
So can I just make one quick comment? I want to not only compliment Corey and his team for looking and choosing Fishers, but Scott, you and your team, in this pandemic that we've been under, in such an absolutely horrible 2020 year, when most people are trying to figure out which way to go and how to move forward as a community, you and your team continue to trudge forward, doing such positive things for this community, that I can't even give you enough praise for you and your team, and Megan and everybody else who's able to pull this off during this very trying time in the world that's going on. So my hat's off to you guys for getting this done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. We're going to move on to item number eight, R101920C. This is a request to approve an economic development agreement with Maple Dell Development, and I'm going to turn it over to Megan Baumgartner again for her presentation.
Thank you, Council President. Again, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development. This was an economic development agreement that came before council last month and was continued to this month. Just as a quick refresher of the site that we're discussing tonight, this is the Maple Dell Development. That's just west of the Strip Center commercial area with Chatham Tap, Wild Ginger Pier Eatery. It is 17 total properties within that area, approximately 10 acres. And if council recalls, a couple of years ago, we did include this area and add it into our Nickel Plate District designation, and it was rezoned as a village center. Again, this is just the quick timeline of the project that's gotten us here to date. 14 properties were included in a land acquisition agreement with the city's redevelopment commission between the RDC and Hagaman Group. And this land acquisition agreement said, "We want to be a partner in determining what goes on this site and be really thoughtful about it since it's such an important area of our community. It's a transition point between commercial and residential." And the 14 properties that are outlined here in yellow are the properties that were included in that. In April of this year, the property that was in the red box agreed to a purchase with Hagaman Group, so a separate land acquisition agreement was done for the redevelopment commission. But at the time that Hagaman Group came into the agreement with the city, they started meeting with different property owners, sent letters out to the residents, and really served as that main connection point for the site. Again, the proposed development and site plan for council's consideration tonight, this is just for the economic development agreement. A total investment of at least $30 million, most likely looking closer to $36 million, 190 total units. The great thing about these units that you can kind of see from the site plan, but really doesn't show the scale, is the mix of housing types that are in here. So we wanted this to feel like a neighborhood within the city instead of just a detached multifamily project that didn't incorporate and didn't blend well. So the properties along the west side of the development, so most of the properties that are adjacent to the Charleston Crossing neighborhood, those are two-story duplexes. We wanted to make sure that there wasn't any potential for headlights that could go into people's backyards or into their patios. The interior, that block C, those are three-story townhomes. And then around the perimeter along 116th Street and on the east side of the property, those are all three-story kind of traditional garden-style apartments. And again, to refresh on the agreement terms, the joint group between Hagaman Group and J.C. Hart, so they are the co-developers of this, they have requested 100% TIF capture of a developer-backed bond. So again, want to emphasize that city council is not responsible, or the city is not responsible for paying the debt service or the issuance costs. 100% of the TIF capture is estimated at $6.146 million. In the economic development agreement, it does now reflect, it's either the lesser, it's 100%, but will not exceed the $6.146 million. We've also clarified the waiver of fees. So the only fees that will be requested in this are the sewer and stormwater fees, and then the parks impact fees. And again, as part of this development, the developer will annex the properties and has to adhere to all city and state codes and procedures. They have, since they were here last time, some additional renderings that have been created. So I wanted to share those tonight. And again, the development group, Tom Dickey and Todd May with J.C. Hart are here to talk to council a little bit about that.
Thank you, Megan.
Thanks, Megan. Good evening, council, mayor. Thanks for having us. I'm Tom Dickey with Hagaman Group. I'm the Managing Director of Real Estate. And as Megan alluded to, Todd May with J.C. Hart is here as well to answer questions or address anything that you'd like to talk about tonight. We want to do two things this evening. One is just to show you these renderings, which we promised last time. We had artist sketches last time. We have some computerized rendering. So I want to pull those up. Am I just left click or just arrow here? Arrow, okay. Megan hit the highlights of the project. We all know where the site is now. It's the second time we've talked about it. The site plan, just real quickly, Megan hit on these highlights too, but a couple of points is there's garages in a lot of these buildings. And so 85% of the units have at least one parking spot inside. The exterior parking is inside these courtyards, which is very different than a typical sort of suburban apartment complex. This idea, and Megan referred to it, and you'll see in the renderings, is this is a city street. This is a city street. There's been some concern from residents about this drive. Remember here that these folks that live in these townhomes are going to be coming home into their garages, and there may be a guest or two out in front, but there's not going to be a lot of traffic on this road. And Todd can talk in more detail, but the engineering team is just getting into this to figure out how to make sure those lights aren't hitting, you know, this house, and that can be anything from a brick wall to landscaping and other things. So that is ongoing. And just as a reminder to council, which I know you know, we're here talking about the economic development agreement, not the final development plan, which is probably 90 days away, and that will be part of the review of the Nickel Plate Review Committee. So here's a rendering looking down 116th Street, at the three-story nature, kind of set back off of 116th Street with individual entrances into apartments from here. You know, a gap here, sort of creating some sense of place, and then the facade heading west. And just notice the brick, the stone, and these aren't set. And this isn't one artist, one render's take, sort of on the plan. This will be refined probably several different times as it moves through the design process. This is a shot from inside the development looking northwest at the clubhouse area. So the Charleston Crossing neighborhood is to the west down this street. This is, and to the north would be 116th Street. This is the clubhouse area. And here with, you know, sort of amenities outside, sort of mimicking a retail look of that storefront, or that store, mimicking a storefront look. And then you can see they were sort of intermixed throughout the development. This sort of iconic stone chimneys is part of the design. This is looking due west. So that three-story building I just showed you is to the right here. These are the townhomes to the left. And again, feel of a city street, parking in behind, some street parking. And then just to the far west, you see the two-story patio homes. And so that's, those are the homes that you would see. And those backyards are backing up to backyards in Charleston Crossing, those two-story buildings there. So that was the first thing I want to do. The second thing I want to do is just talk about some questions that we heard last month at council and that we've heard since then, and just hit them head-on and have a discussion with you. So one of the things we hear, as developers and investors in apartments, are there's just too many, whether it's Fishers, or whether it's Noblesville, or whether it's somewhere in Kansas City, the first thought is, gosh, aren't there just too many apartments? And so I wanted to hit that sort of head-on tonight, talk about a couple of things. One is the Nickel Plate District Plan that the city adopted in 2013. It was people, people, people. In order for the merchants and businesses and restaurants to be successful, there had to be people in downtown. So the leaders at that time targeted roughly 2,000 new multifamily units in downtown Fishers. Not, I wouldn't say multifamily, just 2,000 new residential units in downtown Fishers. And today, with the projects that have improved since 2013, that number sets at just under 1,000. So you're about halfway there from the plan that was set out in 2013. Since about that time, since 2014, when these numbers started to be calculated, there's been about $875 million of new investment in Fishers and 7,000 new jobs. So, and not all that's in Nickel Plate District, but the vast majority of it is. And so I guess you could possibly debate whether that means success or not, but I would argue that it means that the Nickel Plate District Plan has been pretty successful to date. The other thing that's here is, gosh, look, all these pretty buildings have been built, they're all sitting empty. My friend told me that they're empty. And so I want to address that. And these numbers are from two weeks ago on Monday, so they may have ticked up a little bit or down a little bit in the last two weeks. The Depot, which is in front of City Hall here, is 92% occupancy. The Switch, which is over my shoulder to the right, in front of City Hall, is at 95% occupancy. Spark, the project that is across from Four Day Ray, is at 90% occupancy. And Sunbless, which has been here for many years, is at 97% occupancy. So there is no vacancy in downtown. I also included, if you're curious, the Mark, which is on the east side of I-69. It's in lease-up. It's only been leasing up since really the day COVID started. Unfortunately, it was about when it started leasing up. And it already is 68% leased. So that's the real status of the market in Fishers for downtown apartments. And then, you know, isn't Fishers outpacing other communities, perhaps, is an argument that we've heard, or a statement that we've heard. Fishers in the year 2000 had 13.3% of its housing stock as apartments. Today, it's, according to the report done by the planning department, is roughly 16%. So it has ticked up some, but I think you can understand it's not out of proportion. It's not doubled. It's not even 25% more than it was. And compared to these other communities, and I'm not trying to rank who's higher, because these numbers can all have, you know, go one way or the other, but generally, they're all pretty close. Between Carmel, Noblesville, Zionsville, Fishers are all in sort of that 17, 18, 19% range, with Fishers on the lower end of that range. And nationally, I think a number you've heard before, again, was in the planning department's report, is that national average for rental stock or for apartments is about 22%. So that's why, I just wanted to hit that issue. You know, aren't there too many apartments head-on, so we can get that behind us? And then just jump back to these questions. Burden on public services and government budget. So this is actually the opposite of that. This, infrastructure is already there. 116th Street's already there. Water sewer is already there. All the investment in infrastructure on site is private infrastructure, so the city's not going to be maintaining the streets, maintaining the water, or maintaining the sewer pipes, and so on and so forth. Those are privately owned. And so the only public infrastructure needed is improvement to 116th Street at the light, which is a new left-turn lane going west, and most likely a sidewalk in front of 116th Street, both of which should be funded by the development. And then, I'm not sure if this costs or doesn't cost, but sort of reprogramming and having the smart light system up and down 116th Street, think about how that new light, that new movement of that light gets implemented into the system. So you get $36 million of investment and hardly any new investment in public infrastructure. So that's a positive thing to budgets. School-aged children, what's the impact on HSE schools? J.C. Hart's experience in Hamilton County is about 10% of the units will have one student. So here, we're talking 19, 20 students will be going to HSE schools. And I would suggest with, if this ends up being assessed at about 24 million, that's a lot of assessed value per student, you know, in the school system. So again, I think it's a net, I would argue, it's a net positive impact on the school system. How does this contribute to Fishers' economic development goals? So I'm on the heels of a great project, and some of the, you know, sense of place and other things that attracted Incog here, I think, is what we're trying to accomplish. So much of economic development today is about attracting the talent. It's not about tracking the company. So no one's out trying to convince General Motors or Ford to locate their next factory here. What Megan and her team are doing are trying to get the talent to locate here, and companies will follow. And we have, I think you were provided a statement from Larry Gigerich, sort of one of the, I would argue, one of the country's leading site selectors, who talked about diverse housing, sense of place, investments like we're talking about are really good for talent attraction. So, again, I would argue that that furthers the city's goals for talent attraction, ultimately its economic development goals, to grow jobs and investment in the city. Well, apartments lower my home value in neighboring communities. Fishers Point condos, Charleston Crossing neighborhood next west and south of us, often talked about in these types of scenarios. There's been studies, which I cited in the paper, where that's just not the case. But those are national studies, and so if I were living in Charleston Crossing, I'd say, what does that have to do with Fishers? You know, let's talk about my market. And so J.C. Hart has some specific experience with that. As you all know, Hamilton Proper, or the Hamilton, at Hamilton Proper, the Hamilton Apartments that J.C. Hart developed, they studied 15 homes that sold before the apartments were even announced, and then sold, studied those 15 homes when they were sold after the apartments were completed. And those apartments in that timeframe went up about 11, almost 12%. And the other homes that were sold in Hamilton Proper also went up almost the exact same amount. So the local, and that's a very, and you heard Todd say this last month, that project is very, very similar to what we'll expect to see at Maple Dell. All right. What is a renter by choice, a term that Todd used last month as sort of describing who is the target market here? The rents here are not cheap. They'll be one of the highest in Fishers, probably just second to the Mark, which is across the street, which I referenced earlier. And so that renter is not someone who can't afford a house in Fishers. That renter is someone who chooses to rent for various reasons, lifestyle, you know, downsizing, just coming to the market to work for Incog and not sure where they want to live permanently, so they rent for a year, those type of things. So that's the renter that this targets. Todd, as he mentioned last time, he would tell you that one of the fastest-growing segments at J.C. Hart are empty nesters, who are downsizing in communities like Fishers but want to stay in Fishers in a very high lifestyle, low maintenance, lots of amenities, and so that's the target. That's the target here. So that's a renter by choice, and that's the target for the renter at Maple Dell. What about traffic? Perhaps one of the toughest questions in Fishers, because particularly in downtown Fishers, because traffic in downtown signals, A, the plan's working. Seems a little bit counterintuitive, right? I mean, the plan was to build a vibrant downtown in 2013, and when the plan was implemented. And by definition, that means you're going to have traffic. And so from, you know, Hague Road to Cumberland, traffic has increased, no doubt, and it will continue to increase, not just with this project if it's approved, but future projects in that area, this really for, you know, sort of denser living. So there's no, I can't stand here and say no impact, right? It will have an impact, but it's also part of the plan to have that in downtown, and 116th Street's not getting wider. So the city has worked for many years to make other improvements ahead of densification of downtown, the 116th Street interchange, State Road 37, and many, many other improvements. North Street and South Street, even in the downtown, is to take it off, take traffic off 116th Street. So we have certainly already engaged the engineering department, who I know will engage Steve Fairbach at ANF and his firm, to figure out how best to deal with the additional traffic and the movements. But it is part of the plan for densification in sort of downtown Fishers. And then finally, just real quickly, what's the economic impact? I hit on it earlier, but some of the stats that J.C. Hart has from the Hamilton project, again, they expect that same renter by choice here. They have, the average income there is about $85,000, times 190-some residents is a lot, times your income tax rate, and that's where there really is economic impact, plus all that money being pumped into the local economy in Fishers. So that's what, we just wanted to hit some of those questions. And then I guess a couple others that aren't on the list. Last Friday night, at a meeting at Charleston Crossing that I attended, there was a gentleman there who swore, either I or Todd or somebody with our companies made offers to buy property in Charleston Crossing. And I think others have, I've sort of heard that's not, it hasn't happened. It just has not happened. There is no plan to do that. There's been no desire to do that. There was never a thought on our part. We bought the options to buy these properties from someone else. I don't know whether he did. I don't know if somebody else alongside us is trying to think, hey, if we get these properties, maybe Hagaman or J.C. Hart wants to buy from us. We have absolutely no plans or even discussed potentially buying properties in Charleston Crossing. So that's that question. Oh, a secondary access point, which I think came up last month. Our main plan is to have off 116th Street. It may be that the fire department, once we get into review and engineering, requires a secondary access, which is not uncommon. And it's also not uncommon for then a landowner like us to go to our neighborhood. And it's also not uncommon for the landowner like us to go to our neighbors, which would be the owners of the Chatham Tap Retail Center, and say, we'll, we'll buy an easement from you. We'll pay you whatever, thousands of dollars for this easement. And then there'll be a gate put up there that only gets opened if the, the fire department or police department has keys and needs to get into the, and 116th Street access is blocked, and we have to come in that direction. So we don't know whether that's going to be required or not. If it is, we'll have to go get that. If we don't, then we just won't get the approval from zoning to, to move forward. So I wanted to mention that secondary access, because I know that's been talked about as well. And with that, Todd and I are both available for questions and would entertain any questions you might have. So we appreciate your time and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution R-101920C?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Okay, I'm now going to open up for any questions or comments from the council. Does anyone have any comments?
I'll make a comment, if you please. Todd, Tom, thank you very much. I had the pleasure of attending the meeting at Charleston Crossing a couple of weeks ago on a Friday outdoors, and they basically offered the same presentation to the neighbors. And although there were tons of questions, I thought you both did a, a good job addressing the questions and the concerns. And two other things, explaining the process, because we're not, although the thoughtfulness has already gotten into the design and the plans, you did explain that on down the line, the conversations will continue and the thoughtfulness for the neighbors will be addressed. And I appreciated that. And then also, as you did tonight, Megan, I think you did as well, explaining how this project fits into the overall vision of the Nickel Plate District. That was very important to me, to see how this is one component of the greater whole and the vision of the district. So I just wanted to thank all three of you for your time that Friday evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Vare. I also just want to thank the developer, too. We, we encourage the developer to answer the questions that we've been receiving via email, and I thought it was important to answer all those questions. So I appreciate the, the public and the area and neighborhoods sending us some emails with your concerns. And I think hopefully this will help to provide more clarity and, and information. So thank you for that.
I, I have something here that I want to say. I was originally, expressed my hesitation about this project because I wanted to see more homeownership on the west side of Fishers. And after hearing my comments, I think the mayor was a little bit surprised by him. He reached out to me, and we sit down, we met. And after listening to my concerns, Mayor Fadness expressed his desire to, he understood the desire to, for more homeownership on the west side. And the mayor is working on a proof of concept that he shared with me for the near future. And the concept has been proven in other communities. And I look forward to supporting this, the single-family homeownership on the west side of town as he moves forward the exploration and implementation of that within Fishers. So I want to say thank you to the mayor for reaching out, listening, and even moving forward and addressing those concerns. I did notice that also Megan did indicate that this, it does, it goes back to the Nickel Plate District and the plan for that, so it is part of the plan. In my meeting with the mayor, I understood the economics that this project really doesn't support single-family homeownership, and I look forward to working with the mayor to bring other opportunities in the near future for the west side of Fishers. So I wanted to just say thank you for the mayor for reaching out.
Thank you, councilors. So, Stoller, are there any other questions from the council? Okay, all those in favor of approving economic development agreement with Maple Dell Development Resolution R-101920C, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine. That's government miscellaneous items on our agenda. It's 092120C. It's a request or approve amendment to Chapter 91 of the City of Fishers Code of Ordinances, the animal ordinances. And here to present is Chris Greisel, our attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, global members of the council. Good evening, for the record, Chris Greisel, Attorney for the City of Fishers. I'm here tonight to present an amendment to Chapter 91 of the Code of Ordinances regarding our animal ordinance. For the public who weren't here at the work session, this has been a process the city's been working through since the beginning of the year. The Hamilton County Humane Society has had a goal to unify all Hamilton County communities into aligning their animal ordinances for code enforcement purposes and to update standard practices across all communities in Hamilton County. We, we started the conversation in January, February, then COVID hit. We put it on the back burner until somewhat of a normal process started back again with the council. And then tonight, before our meeting, well, last month in September, we had first reading. Tonight before our meeting, we had a work session with the Humane Society and Hamilton County government officials to answer some of those questions that have been given regarding the animal ordinance. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. And if there are no questions, I'd look for your support in updating this ordinance and moving forward on the enforcement side for the city.
Chris, is there a public hearing, a second reading on there?
There's no public hearing.
Do we have to make, do we have to suspend the rules, Ryan?
You do not.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion approved by Pete, is there a second? Second by Todd. Now going to open up for any more comments or discussion for Attorney Greisel from the council.
I have a quick question. If the ordinance is approved, how, will there be some communication effort to the residents?
Absolutely. So that's a great question. So when an ordinance is approved, that amends our Code of Ordinances to, we have to publish that notice. So we'll take the next steps of publishing the ordinance of passing. We'll put out information to the public regarding the updated ordinances, as well as begin the education process with our police department, who's been going and working hand-in-hand with the Humane Society in Hamilton County. So absolutely. Well, the effective date of the ordinance will be when it's officially published. So we'll probably publish it this week, and you can expect probably no later than next week, having it officially published in the record.
Okay, I'll now call for a vote to vote for 092120C to approve the amendment to Chapter 91 of the City Code of Ordinances dealing with animals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for your support.
So we'll move on to item 10 of the agenda, dealing with budget and financial items. This is 092120B. This is a request to approve the City of Fishers 2021 Salary Ordinance. This is a second reading. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Bradford, who's going to present the 2021 budget and the 2021 salary ordinance.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. As you mentioned, I'll talk about items 10 and 11 together. So first, I want to talk a little bit about the 2021 City of Fishers budget. As you recall, last month, we had our public hearing and had our initial reading of the budget. At that time, we had made some recommendations to the council based upon our updated local income tax numbers that we had recently received. And so based on the feedback from the city council, we have updated the departmental budgets to reflect those changes, which are 3% salary increase to all city employees, along with elected officials, a $500 bonus for employees in lieu of the PTO buyback that we had removed earlier this year, the addition of a shift firefighter, the addition of another patrol officer and a forensic analyst to the police department, two full-time inspectors slash code enforcement. And then we also increased the contribution to non-for-profits by $50,000. So the City of Fishers Salary Ordinance that you see before you on item 10 has been reflected to increase the bi-weekly amount, the 3%, and then also updates some titles that needed cleaning up. Then, as we mentioned, there are no official changes to the budget amount in terms of total overall budget related to how we advertise. So they have been reflected departmentally on Gateway.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 092120B?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, second by John. Is there any discussion from the city council members?
Either item?
On, we're on number 10 right now. Sure, go, I mean, I guess it's all related, so go, go ahead.
Is, is that okay? I just, I, my question was about the budget. Can I?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I just didn't want to get out of order. Um, I just had a question about, um, it, it's hard for me to wrap my head around the budget without addressing frankly the uncertainty that could be facing us next year, the year after that, the year after that. So can you just speak to that a little bit? Not only about cash reserves, but nobody knows what's going to happen in the future, but somehow we have to budget for it.
Yeah, and I, and I can speak to that. And I think, A, one of the things that you will notice is that we have, for the 2021 budget, made the move to increase our cash reserves. So we have a policy within the city that we, 50% of next year's property taxes, that's going to be held in cash reserve. This is a city policy. There is no mandated reserve policy by, by the state of Indiana, by anybody. This is something we've taken upon ourselves to do and be prudent with cash. And so we, we finish with an excess over our required allotment. So what we are doing for 2021 is saving a large portion of that split distribution that we're receiving and starting to build up that cash reserve. And then we can get into 2022, see what that takes. You know, when we discussed the budget, we had made some decisions that we thought these lit numbers were going to be substantially lower, substantially lower. And we made the choice to move forward, and then when the numbers came in higher, okay, we can do this, but we're still going to sit on a large excess of cash. And then, in addition, my office, the finance committee, the mayor, we all sit down and look at our fiscal plan and project out two, three, four years and to see what that trending looks like, what that does, to put us in an advantageous cash position. And as we discussed, you know, this year in 2020, we have taken some immediate steps to deal with COVID and some budget savings, even though we're not really affected this year. 2020, we're not getting substantial changes in revenue this year, but we are taking the steps to even increase our cash reserve this year. So I would answer that, yes, we need to be on the lookout, but I, we are being on the lookout. We're saving a big chunk of cash to move into 2022 and hopefully continue to build and increase that reserve.
And Lisa, can you explain real quick the difference between cash reserve and rainy day fund?
They're kind of used simultaneously in general city accounting. But a lot of times, cities or towns will have a designated fund they call literally the rainy day. It's usually mandated, and it is mandated by the state of Indiana. However, not all cities and towns keep what I would term their savings, essentially their savings account. Your savings account can either be within your rainy day fund or within your general fund. It's a kind of internal policy decision at a city or town level, whether it lives in your rainy day or whether it lives in your general fund.
So our cash reserve is cash balance.
Yes.
Projected at, at the end of the year.
It's like your savings account or your.
We, in fact, I think, Councilwoman Vare, if I remember, there was a time we didn't even have a rainy day fund. We just had our general fund and whatever we deemed as reserves. But then the state started giving what's called special income tax distributions. When you collected more than you thought you were going to, they would distribute it. But under Indiana law, they said it had to be distributed to a rainy day fund. And so what you see oftentimes in ours is our rainy day fund is just a conduit for which the state deposits that special distribution. And then it gets transferred out into the general fund or where have you.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, because we do have a rainy day fund, but there's like nothing.
Yes, and that's not, yes, it's meant, yes, our rainy day fund is literally whether the state mandates it to be put in there or sometimes we do it from one time.
From, from your perspective, our cash reserve is what we project our ending cash balance to be in the general fund. So if that's at 20 million or 16 million, that's, that's what we view as rainy day slash reserve slash what have you. And we don't, we don't spend that money unless it comes back before the council for an additional approval. If that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, welcome to Indiana revenue rules.
I'm learning.
Where two plus two doesn't equal four.
Well, if, if I may just kind of put things in perspective, when we started this budget process, as the council members might recall, we had a flat budget, no raises. And looking forward, it did not look very well at all. And thanks to work from a number of people, the revenue projections came in much better. We're putting an extra $5 million this year into our reserves, if I'm not mistaken. There's no city, the entire state is doing to be able to financially perform the way we're performing, which is a testament to how we're operating our, our financial situation here in the City of Fishers. So it, it's turned out tremendously better than what we originally envisioned. You, you plan for the worst and hope for the best. And some things happened with our, our discussions with the City of Carmel, with Speaker of the House Houston, the mayor, that turned this thing around. We did a lot of work to get this happen. So I'm, I'm very proud of this budget. I'm really proud of Lisa and her leadership, and certainly proud of our committee of what we've been able to do and do it in a fiscally conservative fashion.
I think, I think one thing to all of your questions about the $5 million, you can look at it one time as cash going to our cash reserve, which is important. But equally as important is, let's assume revenues stay that level. We collectively then have $5 million going forward to pledge towards recurring expenses. And why I think that's important is we think about opening up Fire Station 97. We need to add more staff. What's going to be telling for this group, for all of us, is as we get into next year, you know, as we start forecasting for those revenues, if they even stay even close to the same as they are this year, we'll have some capacity there to say, okay, now it's time to add, you know, more public safety officers or things of that nature. We're just being extra cautious. I never want to put a recurring expense on a one-time cash allotment. So we're, we're really going to be watching closely both income tax and property tax as we move forward. But I think these are all very valid questions for us to keep. We can't answer them tonight, but we all should be paying attention as we move forward into 2021.
I agree. Your questions are really valid, and it's good to, I think we need to always question as we move forward, because we just don't know. I mean, and that's, and that's exactly right, so. But I appreciate all the hard work by everybody.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and ask for a vote to approve the 2021 Salary Ordinance, Ordinance 092120B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We're moving on to item 11, related to the 2021 City of Fishers budget. It's, oh, is, 092120? And if there's no further questions, we're going to have a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second, motion by, by John, second by Pete. Any additional questions? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call a vote for approving the city's 2021 budget, ordinance 092120. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now moving on to item 12. This is a resolution R-101920A. It is involving the issuance of the City of Fishers, Indiana Taxable Redevelopment District Refunding Bond Series 2020A to refinance the Town of Fishers, Indiana Redevelopment District Bond Series 2011, the Geish Road Projects. And I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Bradford for her presentation.
Thank you. And as the council is aware, we've brought before you numerous refunding opportunities due to the low interest rate environment. This item before you is a request to refund the Series 2011 Redevelopment District Bonds. This was approved by the Redevelopment Commission earlier today. The item before you, this in itself, if we were to refund it, does not have a significant amount of savings. However, as we move forward to the end of the year and we have a geo-issuance, we wanted to go ahead and bring this before you in case the interest rate environment changes. It's changing every day. If it becomes more advantageous and we can issue it and get some savings, if we can bundle it with something and get some savings, that's what we want to do. But we wanted to go ahead and bring this for you for approval so that if the environment becomes advantageous for us to refund, we wanted to move forward.
Thanks, Lisa. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 101920A? Thanks, Lisa. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 101920A?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, is there a second? Second by Selena. Are there any questions for Lisa?
So in essence, Lisa, we aren't really doing anything other than giving you the authority to look for savings on these bonds.
Yes.
Thank you.
To refinance.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of approving resolution R101920A? Approving of the issuance of taxable redevelopment district refunding bond series 2020A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 13, it's ordinance 101920. And it's the ordinance of the common council of the city of Fishers, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation funds for the purposes of funding, of providing funds to refinance the city's general obligation bonds of 2011 series A to pay for construction of certain improvements and incidental expenses in connection therewith, and to pay the cost issuance of the bonds, and so Lisa will present on this.
All right, um, for the record, this ordinance actually contains two uh, bond approvals within it. There is the general obligation bond series 2020C, and then the general obligation bond series 2020D. So the general obligation bond series 2020C is an original bond, not to exceed amount of 4.6, and this is the one-year uh, general obligation bond that we discussed with regard, with regards to the 2021 budget. And it is focused on repair and repavement of roads within the city of Fishers. So a large capital investment in our road infrastructure. And then the series 2020D is a refunding bond of the 2011 general obligation bond. And so again, kind of with the earlier bond, the 2020D doesn't have huge savings, but the opportunity to refund it and issue it in correlation with the 2020C uh, will give us some cost savings that we can move forward with. If there are no questions, I had asked to suspend the rules and have for second and third reading.
Public hearing or no?
No.
Yes, public hearing?
No.
No. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules? Rules, okay. Motion by Pete, is there a second? Second by Todd Zimmerman. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Todd. To approve ordinance 010920. Are there any additional comments or questions? No? Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance 101920? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item 14. Are there, is there any other unfinished or new business, Chris?
Nope.
Nope, okay. We're going to move on to the community comment period. As I mentioned at the beginning of our council meeting, all comments by residents that have been received and distributed uh, e, by email were, were provided to the city council. These comments will be placed on the public record for this month's meeting as if the members were present here to give those comments in person, and now I'm going to open it up to the community comment. Any member wishing to speak has three minutes. Um, please uh, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Nick Binjano. Um, I'm counsel for Mr. Chris Chrissy. Uh, a resident and homeowner in Charleston Crossing, directly adjacent to the proposed redevelopment site at Maple Dell. Um, to, we'd like to get a couple of things straight for the record. Primary, my client's primary concern with regards to this development uh, in addition to um, items such as increased traffic noise, uh, reduction in property value uh, is, is largely the lack of communication between the developer J.C. Hart, uh, the investor Hagenman Group, and the residents of Charleston Crossing. My, my, my clients frankly were not aware of the economic development agreement or the uh, the, the redevelopment proposal, um, many of whom are actually sitting behind me right now. The, the individuals at Hagenman and at J.C. Hart communicated only with the president of the HOA and the residents directly adjacent to the proposed redevelopment. And they, they'd like the opportunity to voice their concerns um, in regards to, in regards to this development.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Amanda Boldner, um, 11527 Charleston Parkway. And I was here last November about the Maple Dell, and I'm a one-note person. And I'd like to know what the city is doing about the traffic on that, because with the light, if the light increases for those apartments, then that will make traffic back up onto Charleston Parkway. And currently Charleston Parkway, at certain times, we already can't get out of our development, and we go the back way. And I'm sure that Burberry and Berkeley Grove don't appreciate that, so. And also I know that hooking the new development up to um, South Street, it's too expensive for the developer, but does the city have any plans to hook that development up and make it not just a access, but make it full, so that way some of the traffic would be diverted to South Street?
Thank you. Um, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Chrissy, 11508 Charleston Parkway. Uh, 20-year Fishers resident, and now very irate Fishers resident. I just sit on the tip of an iceberg of all, every homeowner that was against this proposed development, every homeowner in our development. So how it could get passed is beyond me. But if the city of Fishers thinks you build strong great communities with apartment complexes, good luck with that. Because you build it with homeowners that are willing to invest themselves and stay in the neighborhood. Apartments by nature are transient units, and I can't understand how the lies and deceptions have gotten this far. Hagenman Group sent out a letter to us saying we would have input on the development. And we would meet with everyone in the homeowners association. That meeting never happened. I questioned Mr. Dickey, who made it a point that he was good friends with Mayor Scott Fadness, and that he didn't need to have a meeting because he already had the zoning. And they were going to put up apartments in 190 units in a, in a pandemic. Are you guys crazy? 14 homes, you're going to put 190 units. How many people is that? Where's the recklessness with that? And Ms. Bear, you were at that meeting. That meeting was only subject to a handful of homeowners. A handful that, board of that property. You, you made it sound like everybody knew about. There's still people in our development that don't know about this proposed development. Because of lack of communication. We're going to remove our HOA president. We're under the process of removing him. But for the city to sit here and think you're building a great community with lies, deception? Is that how, is that how Fishers works? Lies and deception. And property values do depreciate on a very congested area. We were single-family dwellings with young families. I've lost a lot of good friends that moved because of this stupid proposed development. You want to slap an apartment complex next to our wonderful neighborhood? And that's what it is. It's a neighborhood. Apartment complex is just a complex. Think about that.
Anybody else wishing to speak this evening? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Lemmy Saylor. Uh, my address is 7701 Jamestown North Drive. Um, I have slightly less aggressive feelings, I guess, on the matter. Um, I will say that I, I recently moved here. I, I took ownership of my home in February. Um, part of the reason that I moved here uh, to Fishers is that I used to live in Noblesville about six years ago before moving out of state and returning. Um, I came here to Fishers because I knew this area was wonderful. I loved living here beforehand, and I came oftentimes down to visit with friends and come to places like the Chatham Tap before moving away. Um, when I came back to help take care of my family, uh, we'd come down here and I'd seen the area, I'd seen the developments, I'd seen the amazing work that you guys have all been doing uh, with the revitalization of the nickel plate district, and I was hooked. I immediately started looking for homes in the area. Uh, I will admit, I started looking with apartments. Uh, and then I realized it was a better investment for me to put the money that I had been kind of saving away towards buying a home, towards um, giving to, to this community in terms of trying to be the best neighbor that I can. Uh, make a, uh, improvements to my home, yard, adding a new fence, that sort of thing. Um, I used to live in Nashville, Tennessee, and at the time I lived actually just north in Madison, Tennessee, and there was a apartment complex that was, I believe, government subsidized uh, near where I used to live, and it was not well taken care of. Uh, car was set to fire, and it lasted, the husk of which sat there for a very long time. Now, I don't necessarily think that you guys would let that happen or let it sit there for a long time. But what I'm afraid of is that I have moved to this community under the idea that I was buying a home in a very central location. Now, some of this I will take ownership of. I could have looked into the plans that are probably very public somewhere uh, about the intentions of the nickel plate revitalization program uh, to see just exactly what your intentions or hopes were in terms of increased residence. Uh, I did not, so I do take ownership of that failing. Um, however, I will say that when I purchased my home, I was doing so in the idea that I was in a residence filled with homeowners. Because I know that people who own their locations and their homes and their property tend to take better care of their homes and their property. So while I can say that I was interested and intrigued by the apartment complex that was listed here, I do have very grievous concerns as a homeowner in that my investment to buying a home in this community might have been the wrong choice if down the road my house sells for less than I purchased it for because of this uh, this uh, building. I can't say that it will, I can't say that it won't. As you said, it's hard to plan for the future. Uh, I've simply come here as a, as a new residence, uh, seeking basically to, to let you guys know that I am concerned. And I hope that Fishers does take this into consideration as they move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name is Tori Edwards. I live at uh, 1627 Falling Brook Drive um, in Fishers. I have been here my whole life. Um, tonight I actually wanted to speak about a, sort of a different topic, but it does kind of relate uh, to what we've been talking about, this meeting and the last one. And this one is the uh, mayor's initiative for a stigma-free Fishers. Um, and how that initiative relates to the COVID-19 crisis that we're all facing currently. I'm a lifelong Fishers resident, proud graduate of the class of 2005 at Hamilton Southeastern High School. Um, I also belong to uh, the group of Fishers residents that have been diagnosed uh, with mental illness. Um, as you know, and as it is stated on the website, uh, 1 in 5 Fishers residents fall into this category. COVID-19 has presented all of us with many great challenges. Uh, we all have been forced to maintain our own mental sanity and also find the strength to deal with many of the stressors that are the new normal that we all deal with. COVID-19 has presented us with all, has also made things very difficult for a lot of Fishers residents. But none have had it harder than those that deal with diagnosed mental illness. We all want to live a truly happy, healthy, and free life. And Fishers is a great place to do that. We all want to be engaged and active citizens in this community and help to push it forward and to make it better. For all of us, mental health is important, and it's a very important aspect of our lives, but most importantly, it's important for those that deal with mental health problems and that have been diagnosed with mental health issues. COVID-19 has forced many residents to work from home for the first time ever, throwing their daily routines out of whack and in total disarray and with few options. Some are expected to balance their lives and their families to be Zoom classroom teachers for those who have kids in school. And even now, too many of us are dealing with very real financial crises thrown at us because of the COVID-19 pandemic. I would say stigma-free is the least of our worries right now. These strains and many others are real, but more importantly, they could have been avoided. We have a lack of empathy, compassion, and true leadership on all levels of government from our elected officials. Hamilton County has been, has now seen 122 lives lost to COVID-19. Three of those souls departed just this last week. Unemployment is now at a 7.9% nationally. And according to the census data I was able to find here in Fishers, the poverty rate is 3.9%. Folks who are lucky enough to have a job and have not seen wage increases for years, hold hope for some relief.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Anybody else wishing to speak this evening?
Okay, uh, my name is Tom Rogg, and I live at 11510 Jamestown West Drive, Fishers, uh, in Charleston Crossing. And just wanted to point out um, a couple of the issues that have already been talked about tonight, and again, I'll go on with this HOA meeting that initially happened. Only went to, to a certain amount of people. I'm sorry, everybody can't see me here. I'm just kind of hidden behind here. Um, went to a certain amount of people, so in terms of Charleston Crossing, a good majority of us had no idea. And that's a problem, because we all should have something, some sort of information more than not being told as to what was going on, so that's a problem. And my concern about, in fact, you know, I'm in a wheelchair with MS. My concern is that when I try to get around a neighborhood, Charleston Crossing, and try to work my way through, how much traffic is going, going to happen if we have a new apartment complex close to where we are? So that is a concern of mine with this. So we'd like to have a voice and to be able to do a little bit, uh, give a little bit of insight as to what's going to happen. And so I know they passed as to what's going on right now, but we would like to find a way to.
Sir, I'm glad you brought that up. Just a clarifying point about other opportunities for input. Uh, there is absolutely an opportunity for the residents to, to weigh in on what's called a nickel plate review committee. So any, any development that happens in downtown has to go through the architectural review committee, so what the design looks like, uh, what the layout looks like, what the building's um, architectural features are, all of that, uh, there will be an opportunity for residents to, to be a part of that design review process. Tonight was very much just implementing the economic development terms of it, but as for what the, the ultimate physical look of the building will be or the design, there's still another process for that moving forward. So I'm glad you brought that up, sir. I appreciate that.
Yeah, good. I, being handicap, I'm concerned about that.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, Fadness, thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted everybody to, and I know Chris mentioned it as well, but um, we have the majority of the.
Ma'am, you're, could you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jill Rogg. I live at 11510 Jamestown West Drive um, with my husband, Tom. And um, going back to just that, um, the consensus of the neighborhood, we were completely misrepresented by our HOA person. Um, I know we already talked about a meeting. It was a very small meeting. Um, everybody in our neighborhood, we've lived there 20 years. We have always gotten, gotten good communication on these meetings. If you choose not to attend, that's your choice. We had no idea about the meeting, and our HOA president has somehow given the consensus that we are all on board with everything. Um, and we know that it's, you know, you're, it's going to happen. I think our concern is about the access road going from the apartments into our neighborhood. So um, that's on us, you know, we have to get together and see what we can do, but I wanted you all to know that we, we have been misrepresented big time. We had no idea that there was even a meeting, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak this evening? Seeing, go, go ahead, Todd.
Okay. Uh, first of all, Tori, thank you for sharing from your heart and uh, being brave enough to share your personal um, you know, personal situation to, that's not easy to do, so thank you for, for doing that. Uh, secondly, so when I moved here in 1989, it was in Charleston Crossing. It was uh, Fishers was very small at the time. Moved here from Atlanta, Georgia, and I thought I went back in time. I was just 16. It was a brand-new neighborhood, um, uh, lived in Charleston, uh, I think Jamestown North Drive, right by the front pond area. Um, and took a lot of consideration about this, uh, this development. The vision has been really strong, the biggest, so I, when I, when I was walking door-to-door uh, back in 2000, last year when we were running for, I can't remember these years go by. I got so many complaints in Charleston Crossing about property, that the taxes were going. I got so many complaints in Charleston Crossing about property, that the taxes were going so high and the property values were increasing. They got, they were upset with me, um, because their taxes were going up because property values have been skyrocketing. I believe because it's not, it's the dollars, not the percentage, right? The dollar's not the percentage. And so I was trying to explain that it was, hey, because of the vision of downtown, there are a lot of people that want, the, the, the desire of that. Um, and, and with regard to, you know, with Councilor Var attending a meeting, you know, she can only report, I mean, I'm kind of, I mean, we're different sides of the aisle on politics sometimes, but I have to defend her a little bit to say, you can only report what is there when you're at the meetings and you're giving your time to the community to go hear the voice of the community. And I mean, that was the information I even got back from people. So we're hearing a different, obviously, there's not, we're not saying you're not being honest. We're just saying this is the stuff that we hear, and we can only go off of what we hear. Um, but the bottom line is, you know, I've been in favor of this because this is the vision of down, of, of the downtown, the nickel plate, and it really has become something that people are seeking after. When we hear about these new economic deals, I know when I relocated with a couple of my companies that I've been a part of, part of the package was, hey, find a temporary place to live so you can figure out where you want to live, especially if you're coming from the coast, you're coming from different places. And some people just don't know where they want to live, and it's a good spot to say, hey, you know, I can walk to ma, to work maybe. That's what our vision is for, for downtown Fishers. Um, we want a viable place where people can come and work, play, and, and what was the other? I'm just losing my train of thought. Work, play, and.
Live.
Yeah, live. Live. That's the part, yeah.
That's a big one.
Yeah. So, so with the, with the nickel plate trail that is being developed and all that, it's, it's becoming something that people are really seeking after. So I voted against apartment complexes before. I have my reasons for that. But when I feel like there's something that is economic incentive to the community, that's a, is an economic driver to the community, that's where I feel um, that this is important. So, but we, we really appreciate, you know, part of government and part of what we're doing is to listen to you, and we want to listen. So I, I, I don't like when I hear that you feel like something's done on the side or something. You know, we're not listening because we really do listen and try to make the best decision for the city as a whole. Um, and so that's, that's just what I wanted to share.
Thanks, Todd.
I'll, I'll quickly chime in. Um, thank you for, um, residents of Charleston Crossing for speaking tonight. Um, the meeting that I referred to the other day was definitely a small socially-distanced outdoor gathering that I know was focused on the folks that live right adjacent to this proposed uh, development. Um, however, I, I will also say, um, one of my big takeaways from the meeting, the small meeting that we had, was the seemingly unfortunate, perhaps a, a, just an overall lack of trust that the developer and the plans would um, be respectful and thoughtful to the residents. And I do feel strongly that we're on the good path to get there. Um, but uh, you are not the only ones to say communication has been poor. And um, that is something that I know I'll do whatever I can to help facilitate that. And I know that the partners involved with this project has made that commitment as well. So thank you for your feedback tonight. That's very important. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and close the community comment period. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion by Pete. Is there a second? Second by Selena. Motion. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.